This is a special meeting. We're going to go ahead and have the meeting today because of the Hillbilly Days Festival that starts Thursday. At this time, I would like to ask Debbie Bailey, who's the Chair of the Pike County National Day of Prayer Committee in the Pastor of Grace Fellowship Church, if she would say the invocation for us.
Thank you, Judge. Just want to take this opportunity to announce that next Thursday, May the first, is the National Day of Prayer. And our theme is Pour Out to the God of Hope and Be Filled. This is the 74th Annual National Day of Prayer. And although it's the 74th, prayer has been part of the United States since the very beginning. Actually, the first prayer called in 1774 by the First Continental Congress, which that First Continental Congress was instrumental in leading to the American Revolution. So I just wanted to say that, to say, from the very beginning, we have had prayer as part of our nation, and we are continuing that tradition today, next Thursday, May the first, on the National Day of Prayer at noon in the Pikeville City Park. So we'll go to the Lord in prayer. Our most gracious and wonderful and loving and amazing Father in heaven, we thank you for your many, many blessings that you have shown us upon this nation, Lord, and we just give you the thanks and appreciation for all the many things that you've done. We're thankful that we live in a land that is free. We thank you for the freedoms and the rights that we have, and we know that everything that we have is by your hand and by your grace and by your mercy. And, Lord, I ask a special blessing upon this meeting today and a special blessing upon Judge Jones and the whole entire fiscal court. Lord, you know our area, you know the devastation that we've had over the last few years. You know what our people need, and I pray that you would just bless, bless the fiscal court and the judge, Lord, as they, as they work to help our people in eastern Kentucky and Pike County specifically. Lord, I just pray your blessing. You know what we need, you know the resources, you know the connections, and I just pray that you would just lead the way, Lord, to help them, to help our people. So I pray your blessing and just give you the thanks and praise for all things, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. And I would like to ask Jerry Atkins if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, for one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the amendments of the April 8 meeting of the fiscal court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming May 1st, 2025, as the National Day of Prayer in Pike County. And I would like to ask Colonel Downey if he would read the resolution.
National Day of Prayer. Whereas the National Day of Prayer is an annual day of observance when people of all faiths join together and asking God's guidance, peace, and blessings for our nation. And whereas because of the faith of our founding fathers, public prayer and national days of prayer have a longstanding and significant history in American tradition. And whereas the National Day of Prayer was established in 1952 when President Harry S. Truman signed a joint resolution of Congress into law, setting aside an annual day for Americans to join in prayer. In 1988, President Ronald Reagan amended the law, designating the first Thursday of May each year. And whereas millions of people will celebrate the National Day of Prayer with prayer gatherings held at our state capitals, county courthouses, on the steps of city halls, and in schools, businesses, churches, and homes. And whereas the theme of the National Day of Prayer of 2025 in the United States is Pour Out to the God of Hope and Be Filled, it is based upon Romans 15:13, which reads, "Now may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing, so that you will abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit." And whereas we should turn to God as the ultimate source of hope, joy, and peace. We need to seek spiritual fulfillment through prayer and faith. And whereas the National Day of Prayer reminds us that no matter who occupies the seat of power, or what crisis we face, God is always in control. Now therefore, I, Ray S. Jones II, Pike County Judge Executive, in the Pike County Fiscal Court, do hereby proclaim the first day of May 2025 as National Day of Prayer in Pike County, and urge all citizens to give thanks for their many blessings, and ask for God's continued guidance, protection, and mercy as we meet the challenges before us. Witness our hands, Ray S. Jones II, Ronald Scott, Bubby Atkins, and Freddie Lewis.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution proclaiming May 1st, 2025, as National Day of Prayer in Pike County?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Do we have, we have a signed copy? Is that correct? And you want to... Okay. Okay. All right. Next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the Pike County Extension District Board Budget for fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. We have Kristy Porter here today, and we have Emily Cheney, who's the 4-H agent, Emily Is there any, anything that we need to discuss on this, Freddie? Frankie, have you looked at it? Okay. Y'all have anything you want to talk about, or anything you'd like to mention?
I sure.
Come on up.
We have, we just put together some things that have some of our programs that you want to take a look at.
Sure. Thank you. Come on up to the, come on up to the microphone if you don't care.
Thank you.
We didn't include everything, but we wanted to give you some ideas of some of the ongoing programs and clubs we have. I'm in community arts, and I've included our recent dulcimer-making workshop, and on the back, you can see some of the participants and what they were doing and how they enjoyed it. We have an Art Together series where we have kids and their caregivers come together just to kind of put down their cell phones and get together for an hour and a half, hour after school and work, to get together and make some kind of craft project or an art project. The next one is, I have in here is Brush and Brunch, and we get together and we cook a healthy meal, like an NEP-approved meal, and learn about a new art technique, and then we practice that in making, making a painting. And we also have a program we do with my, I do with Myers Towers, and it's a, our next one's coming up on April 29th. It's a mixed media canvas, and we come in once a month with them over at Myers Towers in their community room. And anybody that wants to, for free, can come down and make an art project, or plant flowers, or whatever we're doing that month. And that's what I've included. We also have other things. We have line dancing, we do theater programming, and a lot of different things in the community. And that's fine.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Pike County Extension District Board Budget for fiscal year 2026?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Thank you all very much. We appreciate what you do, and you all play a vital role in the community, and it's much appreciated. We need more kids involved today.
Are there, like, any, I see a lot of times 4-H groups, they do, like, you know, shows and things like that for the kids, dealing maybe with, like, agricultural, you know, or cattle, things like that. We don't do that here in Pike County as of right now, though, but is there something that we can do, maybe as a private person, or a company, an individual company, to help support some sort of program like that?
We actually just started a poultry club. We went to a poultry judging workshop where a lady from the University of Kentucky came, and they taught us how to show chickens at the state fair. And we have several kids that are interested in that, going to the state fair. As far as cattle and things go, we just see the good volunteers who come and help teach kids in that area what the showmanship looks like and the proper ways, and all that good stuff. But the poultry club has been started.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. I mean, anything you can do with kids like that to get them involved in, it's so important, especially today's time, it's really important.
All right. Anything else? If not, the next item is adoption of a resolution approving the execution of rural secondary program agreement between the fiscal court and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid, accepting all roads, streets referred to there as being part of the county road system. Vince, if you and Lindsey want to say something, you can, but if not, we can do this, and I'll leave it up to you. All right. All right. Is there a motion? This is something we do every year, just as part to participate in the rural and secondary It deals primarily with flex funds, the maintenance of the 162 miles of rural secondary roads. This does not include the county road maintenance funds that we receive. This is just the rural secondary for state roads and the programs that come out of that. And is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the court to enter into the rural secondary program agreement with the Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, Rural and Municipal Aid Office?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Thank you all very much. And Lindsey, give your grandfather my regards. Next item is adoption of resolution approving the execution of the County Road Aid Cooperative Program Agreement between the fiscal court and the Transportation Cabinet for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, ending June 30, 2026, as provided in the KRS, accepting all roads, streets referred to there as being part of the county road aid, road system. This is for the county road aid, for us to receive that money that we depend on to run our county road department. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. This next item is adoption of resolution authorizing an application, approval to execute required documents for hazard mitigation. This is the one we passed over at Zebulon Heights. I've gone up there and looked at that, and this is a major issue. There is, it looks like a small river at times coming off the hill behind these homes. I was under the impression it was more for rockfall mitigation, but looking at this, and Jimmy and I went up and looked at it, I mean, it's a massive amount. I, I'm almost of the opinion that there has to be some kind of underground mine works in there for this much water to come off of it. And, because you can sort of see in the photograph where this stuff is coming from, and it's, would you agree with that, Jimmy, that it's, it's not like it's collecting, but when they reported to AML, they missed the cutoff by about six months for AML eligibility? Because I think June of '82 was June, June 16th of '82, or June 6th, somewhere in that ballpark of '82. And I think this mining, the record showed, was somewhere about six months after that. But it's not going to cost the county anything, and I think it's something that the state is inclined to try to, to do something with. I don't think it's going to cost the $750,000, but they're, they're going to have to figure out something about this water coming off. So is there a motion to authorize the application and approval to execute all documents for this hazard mitigation grant?
Yeah, I make a motion.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We have another one. We, it's just order, it's authorization for orders of affiliation for Shelby Creek Volunteer Rescue Squad, camper fire and rescue, and Pike County Technical Rescue. This is something we do every year. Is there a motion to authorize the orders of affiliation?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a renewal of the recreational land use agreement with Big Sandy Company for the trail system at Flatwoods. It's $100 a month, and I think for 10 years, and I think they review it after five years. Is that correct, Jerry? And it's, I'm sure I'm telling you correctly. Jerry, am I telling you right that this is $100 a month? Is that correct? Okay. So is there a motion to adopt the First Amendment to the recreational land use agreement with Big Sandy?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a license for public recreation trails with Pocahontas. This will help us get the trail system started over in the Palm Creek and Blackberry area. Jerry has worked extremely hard on getting this done, and we're making progress with getting this trail system. Jerry, you want to come up for just a second and give it just a brief update on, I know we really covered up the last couple of weeks up at the trailhead.
Can you turn that mic up a little bit? Thank you.
Now, the Pocahontas land, we have been working on for a few months now, maybe several months, been in negotiation back and forth. It's fair to both parties, and it's vital to extending the trail system to our Phase Two. As a reminder, Phase Two, Phase One's been very successful in the Dorton area, but to continue, we have to go to a different locale, and this agreement will give us a lot of property to use in the Macar, Blackberry area over into Palm Creek, where we can open our Phase Two, get it open, get everything going good. We'll work diligently to tie Phase Two to Phase One all the way across the county, from the southern tip of the county at Dorton over to the northern tip.
It's a dollar a year, is that correct?
First two years, then negotiate, yes.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the license agreement for public trails with Pocahontas Land Company and Pocahontas surface interest for the trail system?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, make this statement basically, so on these leases, just so everybody in the public understands, that this is just a easement for a right-of-way. It's not like we're leasing the entire property of Pocahontas, or, you know, we're not, like, taking a lease on all of it. We're just getting a lease on an easement for the side-by-sides to go through. And how wide is the easement, Jerry?
That is correct. This, each company has their own parameters of how their lease goes. With Big Sandy Land in the Flatwoods area, we actually leased the entire area, 2,600 acres, and that aired discretion to make trails where we felt we could make them. With Pocahontas land, they consider it a licensed agreement. They do ask us to track exactly where we want to go, and submit those tracks to them. Say, 25 foot from center be a 50-foot easement across their property, but we have to submit where we, the trails we want to use, and get their approval. Then we can mark them, rate them, and use them, map them in the trail system.
That's good.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. Jerry, thank you for the hard work on this. All right. Next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the proposed budget for fiscal year '26 from the Judge Executive. Frankie has put this together. It is essentially including, it's very similar to last year's budget, and includes the capital items that we've identified. Frankie, I think it has 2% pay raise for county employees, is that correct? And there was some discussion for a 3% pay raise. I think that it would not be wise to do 3% right now, and I'll give you a real good reason why. We just met, or Bobby just met today, our health insurance premiums are going up by eight point, almost 9%. The premium for health insurance for county workers is going to be $227,000 a month, just for health insurance for county employees. So we don't know about our liability and our workers' comp premiums yet, but when you build the raises in, and this will be in the six years I've been county judge, this will be the fifth year that county employees have had a pay raise. And they had gone, until the year before I came in office, they had gone many years without a pay raise. And I think that's an accurate statement, for those of you who have been here for a while. Is that, is that correct? We've been able to do a lot to help bring up county employee wages. We've preserved the benefits. But the thing that we have to be very, in my opinion, and Frankie can disagree with me on this, because Frankie is, look, Frankie's gone above and beyond, and, you know, this budget doesn't make any major changes. It is essentially the same budget as last year, accounting for some increased costs that we're going to have, the capital items. And the thing is, when you start building pay raises in, going forward, those are going to have to be maintained. And with the loss of population that I keep talking about, that I hope people are listening to, coal severance tax is, is continuing to decline. I don't think, I don't think, you know, Williams spent his whole life in the coal industry, and when we saw the uptick over the last three or four years, Williams said it would be short-lived. And I think, Freddie, you've been in the mining industry, and Bubby works in the mining industry, prices were back down, and production's going to be down. So I think that we need to be real careful going forward, to where we don't build in so much overhead that the county ends up having to come back in a few years and start laying people off. And we're going to have to be real careful and watch our spending, and that's why we've scrutinized every dime that we spend. So, but anyway, y'all have any question?
So in saying that, Judge, I was in a meeting in Nashville last week with the economist on mining, not just coal, but, but metal, non-metal, and coal. And you're 100% correct on the cost of coal has drastically went down right now, which, you know, everybody in the coal industry understands. It's, it's always been that way, right? I mean, it's up and down. It's bloney today and staked tomorrow, you know? I mean, that's, that's part of coal mining. But the facts of it is, is in the thermal side, which is what we mainly are in Kentucky, not to say that we don't have no coal that is, you know, can be blended to make met, but we, we're basically thermal. And until we get a power plant in line, we're not going nowhere in Kentucky as far as in eastern Kentucky. We have to have, and I pray that the, that the federal government will do some subsidies and things to help, you know, push along the power companies to maybe get a coal-fired power plant in line for us. But if that don't happen, I mean, you know, we got 143 million ton of coal right now under us that's mineable, but the problem is, is there's no demand for it because we don't have no power plant to take it to. So that's kind of where we're at on the coal side of things. So before we get all hyped up with, you know, Facebook posts and, and what this one's saying, that one's saying about it, until we see a coal-fired prep plant here or within our region, you know, I don't see it, I don't see it blowing out of the water. I really don't.
Well, this budget has 1.6 million forecast for coal mineral severance. Is that, I think, as I read, and that's based on the fact that we've seen these numbers. We got down to 1.1 million about four years ago, Frankie, was it right? And it's went up, and now it's going back down again. And the simple fact of the matter is, you know, to build a coal-fired power plant, you're talking in excess of a billion dollars. And I would love to see a new coal-fired plant here. I'd love to see it go back to the days when you had coal trucks running everywhere and people working, but the reality of it is, is none of the economists say that's going to happen because, like you're saying, demand.
Right.
And unless the federal government wants to build a billion-dollar-plus power plant, I don't see banks loaning money, because, you know, if the demand's not there for it, and if they're able to power, provide electricity for eastern Kentucky without that plant, then I think it would be hard-pressed to get one built. Nobody wants to see it more than I do, but in reality, if they built one, you're talking years to permit it, design it, construct it, and I'm not sure it could be done in, in seven or eight years, probably, six, seven years, probably, somewhere in that neighborhood. And in the meantime, we've got to deal with what we, the revenue that we think we're going to have. I'm hoping that it, it's more than that. But to put it in perspective, in 2009, the county collected over, it was 12.484 million or somewhere like that, 12.4 million? It was over 12 million in 2009 in coal and mineral severance, and we're budgeting 1.6. If, if we had another 10 million in revenue to do with what we do, we'd be in really good shape. And I'll say this, that this court and the last court has done more with less than a lot of the predecessor courts that had a lot more resources and a lot more money. And it's just about how you, what your priorities are and how you manage it. And, but this is a proposed budget. The court will have, we need to put this, a couple meetings from now, we need to be ready to pass this out. If you all have any changes that you want to discuss with Frankie or me, it's, it's the court's prerogative. I think it's a reasonable budget. And again, I toyed with the idea of a 3% pay raise, but I was somewhat concerned over building in that overhead with the increase in, in health insurance premiums that we're looking at as well. That's just something, that's just something, when you start talking 227,000 per month for health insurance, that doesn't count pension contributions, it doesn't count social security and Medicare contributions and salaries. So the one thing that you can't get away from are those built-in costs, unemployment insurance, those built-in costs that the county has to pay. So is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proposed 2026 fiscal year budget?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Is there a, Greg, any bids?
No.
All right. We have the completed and scheduled work orders. If I have anything you need to talk about? All right. Is there a motion to acknowledge the completed and scheduled work orders from the road department?
Moving.
What's that?
You need a motion?
The motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, or Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions or discussions? Madam Clerk, please call it a roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Yeah. What time we're on this, the road, I, I want to talk just a minute about the, and I, I've talked to Fabian and, and as far as at the county level, we have done everything possible that we can do for the bridge situations in this county. And Middle Elk and Woodman Summer being the two most important that we've put on the, you know, top of the list. And unfortunately, I don't know, it, it's above us. You know, it's nobody in this room's issue. But, you know, the folks over there are really, and I understand that the process here, no, you know, I was thinking, no wonder people is against government. I get it. I totally understand it. Because they can take a simple project that should be so simple to fix when you've got families trapped, they can't get across the river if it rains, they need a bridge, but yet here they are dragging it out for two or three or four months. And God only knows when they're going to say it's okay to do. I get why people don't like the big overreach and all the red tape of government. I really honestly do, because I don't either. I deal with it every day on the federal side too, in the industry. To give you an example, you take a, a lifesaving device, no bigger than, you know, eight inches by eight inches and send it up for approval and it's three years down the road and they're like, well, we still ain't got to it yet, we'll, we'll get it approved. There's no accountability, and I don't understand why there's no accountability in our government with people that has jobs to do, that needs to be doing their job. I just don't understand. And if you try to work this way in the private sector, you won't last an entire shift. They will send you to the house and you can figure out a way to make it on your, your own. And I don't understand the, the urgency, the sense of not, the urgency for those people on those bridges over there. I mean, like I say, we've done what we can. The county has got everything in line, the county has done everything we're supposed to do. Does anybody have a clue, I mean, how much longer we think it's going to be before these poor people can get a bridge to come in and out of? I mean, you've got elderly fouled, you've got children fouled, if somebody was to get hurt or sick. You, you, we've got a mess over there. And these people need out of there, and I don't understand why the urgency is not there above us to make this happen for these people. I don't get it. I, I mean, I, I just don't get it. I, I really don't. I mean, does anybody got any comments or a good reason maybe of why that, that it's not done? And approved? Because we've got our side approved. I mean, we've even got the contractors ready to go. I don't, I don't understand it. I really don't. What, what do you think, Fabian? I mean, what, what do you think we're looking at here? I mean, I know you're just like me, buddy. I mean, you're, you're, you wanted it done yesterday as well? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't have an answer for it at the time. I can tell you what we have done and where we're at. Is last Friday, we did meet with the bridge inspector and FEMA to go out and follow all the paperwork. Now the process is we're just going to go to the CRC for FEMA. They will make their, you know, they, they will make their ruling on what the obligations projects. And that's what we're looking for is that obligation. So that, you know, we have campus week funds to build these bridges.
Right.
So that, I mean, that's where we're at, and honestly, that's, that's all I know. It's at the CRC and then it just depends on how long it takes them to come back.
That's, yeah, well, I mean, I'm dealing with a situation right now, even at my home, where I've got a slide, you know, behind the house. It's two years. I mean, water gushes out of it. So they called me today and they're like, hey, we're going to try to get that in design. Said it may be a couple of years. And I was like, listen, don't, don't even come up to my house when there's somebody dead or my home's washed away. Just stay away, you know? I mean, it, it's, it's, I don't, it's just very aggravating. It's very aggravating. I mean, you know, I, I don't get it. I don't get all the red tape garbage. I mean.
Yeah. And I, you know, I feel the same way. I'm, I'm always just hands-on. I mean, if I see it, I want to fix it.
Right. Yeah, I get it done for the people, right?
But like, honestly, you made that statement and it is true, is we've, you know, we've exhausted every avenue that we know and we're, we're there. I mean, we're trying.
Yeah.
And that is the process and hopefully, I mean, I, I keep saying, but it shouldn't be long. I mean, it really shouldn't before we, we have an answer. It, it shouldn't be. I mean, I really look, with, within a couple of weeks, we should know. But that's about where we're looking at. I would say at least, you know, you're going to be two weeks before you have a determination.
But, but you know, you're just like me. I mean, we're, we're both just guessing, right?
Yeah, that is a guess, yeah.
Yeah. You know, we don't want nobody to hold us to that.
Here, on the, on the other side though, is, you know, they may come up with one tomorrow. I mean, that, so they have it. I mean, you may get an answer tomorrow. But then honestly, it could, it could be a couple of weeks before we know. But I promise you, as soon as I know, you'll know, so you can, and, you know, we'll get that word out to the people.
Yeah. Well, we're doing our, our part. I mean, we, you know.
We are. On that note, now, we did start today, and actually, it's just, it's going to be in your area. Monday, we will start assessing this road damage for all areas. But this, we started today in five and six, lot, five, lot six, Belfry and Phelps area. They will, they start today collecting all this road damage data. And turn, you know, so we can get that turned in. So, and our hope, hope is, is that we can have all this wound up within about thirty days. That's what we're, our goal is, is to have all this road damage gathered and to FEMA within thirty days.
We definitely appreciate all you're doing and all of our road guys are doing. I mean, like I say, we're just in a, we're just in a bind ourselves. We're, you know, we're stuck in between.
And on that note, I mean, I, I do, I can't brag enough on that road crew. But it's everybody, but I'm, I'm in the road department. So I see these guys, and these guys honestly, since this flood, they have, they have really come forward. They've worked their hind ends off.
Yeah, they're killing themselves out there.
They have. And so, yeah, everyone, just, I, I thank those guys, I mean, because they deserve it. They deserve a, a round of applause, I guess, or something.
Well, you know, you see, you know, what gets me is a lot of times, and I know that people don't understand the steps and the procedures and all that of, of government a lot of times. But, you know, when you see something on Facebook or, or somebody says, hey, you, you know, the county's dropped the ball on this one, they're not doing their job, they're not, and, and there's no truth to that. We had, we had these bids in, contractors ready to go four weeks ago. Four weeks ago. I, I mean, we, we was ready to build four weeks ago. But then you got, you know, this one's got to, you know, look at it, that one's got to look at it, you know, just to say that in order to, I guess, feel good that they've got a job in the government, you know? And it, it just, it just blows my mind. I mean, you know, it's not the county, and, and that's what I want the people to know. Because I see stuff on Facebook like, oh, the county's not doing this, it's a shame the county ain't got you guys a bridge. I'm telling you right now, there is nothing in this world that I want no more. I mean, I think about it, it's on my mind every day. I mean, you know, I'm praying for those folks. I mean, we're, I mean, constantly, we, you know, it's in conversation about it. But the thing of it is, is we're, our hands are tied. And it's not the county that is the holdup. We was ready to build four weeks ago. I mean, you know, so I just, I just, I just think that needs, that the people needs to understand that. You know, because God knows, I mean, if I could build you a bridge, I'd be over there building you a bridge tomorrow, you know? I don't, I don't do that, you know? But I will fight for it to, to rush along for sure. And I, I, just people needs to understand the, the process. And, and let me say this, when I say we need to understand the process, I'm not saying we need to like the process because I don't like it at all. I get why probably, you know, half the government is being terminated and fired right now. Because they have turned into a, a people that feels that we work for them when at the end of the day, they work for us. As a county official, as a county employee or whatever, or federal employee, you, we work for the people. They don't, we don't work for you, you know what I'm saying? And, and that persona out there with, especially in the federal government, is just horrible. It's like, you know, they're God and we're down here, and that, I don't like it. I don't like it at all. So I just want the people to know that it's not us.
Well, let, let me say this. We've had, we've been very lucky to have federal coordinating officer Jeremy Slinker from FEMA, who has answered every call and done everything. And, you know, with all this Doge nonsense and all this government efficiency, it's, the FEMA bureaucracy's not changed any. It's what it is, it's what it was. And I understand to some extent why it's there. Because the last thing you want is people out here wasting taxpayer money. If that's really what you want to do and you want to save taxpayer money, I don't like the process of going, what we have to go through on debris removal. It's an onerous process, but I get it, because you don't want people going out here and just raping the government. FEMA has been here and we went with the advice of the Title Basin, the company that does disaster emergency. Because the thing we can't do is we can't go out here and build a million-dollar bridge and not get reimbursed for it. The rules are what they are. FEMA had people on the ground at Middle Elk and at Woodman Summer.
Friday.
Friday. So as soon as the paperwork, we already got the permits from the Division of Water. Title Basin has got those. Of the fifteen permits, fifteen bridges that have to be built, we've got permits back from the state Division of Water. It is what it is, just like, I, I, I understand, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Lewis, that it needs to be streamlined, but I'm not going to point the finger because there's been a lot of hard-working people from emergency management in FEMA that have bent over backwards to help us. Do I think the process could be streamlined? I do. I think the process could be streamlined. But, you know, in this, when you're trying to cut, you know, you got to, you got to keep in mind too, you know, everybody's dotting their i's and crossing their t's because they're afraid of losing their job. The, the bureaucracy's not been streamlined at FEMA. We heard about all this stuff about North Carolina, North Carolina, North Carolina. The process ain't changed. It's ninety days later, we got a new president, it ain't changed it. No. I think that people get frustrated, but, you know, that bridge at Middle Elk is going to take quite a while to get in. It's going to take, what would you say, can we build it in forty-five days?
Yeah.
But it's still going to take some time. It's a million, we think it's going to be somewhere around a million. Fabian thinks it could be a million too.
It will be.
You know, we could have gone out there and started, found a contractor, started working on it. But when we have to pull a billion-two out of the county's budget.
We can go bankrupt.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could bankrupt the county. We could, we could, we could ignore FEMA's requirements and just bankrupt the county, but we can't do that. And, I mean, you know, if you, if you want to try to change this, then we need to call Hal Rogers and Mitch McConnell and Rand Paul. They've all been there for a good period of time. They understand how the process works and let them, let them tell them what needs to be done. I plan on, when I see Congressman Rogers, who's a good friend of mine, talking to him about just having somebody look at what can be done to speed up.
The process.
The process.
Yeah.
But it is what it is. I mean, it, you know, we got a very quick response in twenty-twenty-two. We got a fairly quick response this time. But unfortunately, long after this court leaves office, we're going to be fixing flood damage. We're, we were just now really getting geared up on the twenty-two flood. We were working on twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty flood damage. And, and you still got twenty-twenty-two flood damage that's got to be fixed. And, you know, I saw a lady posting up on a road over on Hurricane, there's a hole beside the road. Well, first of all, the road ain't, there ain't anything wrong with the road. If a school bus runs off the road up through there, they're probably going to be in the creek regardless. It's not possible to fix the amount of damage on over thirteen-hundred sites. And we, we're not, we're just barely over two months from the flood.
Can I say?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just like to say about what you touched on there is, I'd like for the people to understand that these roads, this road damage, and, and the county workers have done a great job on getting us to where we're at. All this is temporary work. Nothing that you see us, that we've done out there right now, is permanent work. It's temporary. We know it. It's just to, to get essential traffic through, to get you guys in and out and so traffic can get to you. But it, it is going to be a long process. And it always really has been. It's just that now it's come to the forefront about the process because we've got two bridges out. We've always been able to do temporary work to get us by until this process is through.
If, if the road had just washed out, we could have had a, I mean, when twenty-two, Fabian himself had to rebuild a, a road, worked two full days or more on a piece of equipment rebuilding the road up on Elkhorn Creek. The simple fact of the matter is, if it's permanent work, FEMA has to come out and look at it. Because they're not going to go, I mean, and I get it. I mean, otherwise you'd have every county in, that was affected by a storm, say, well, this is flood damage. We need, you know, we paved it, we paved this holler and, you know, it's flood damage. They have to look at it before they'll pay for permanent work. And I understand why. And when you've got thirteen-hundred sites.
It's the most that I've been involved with myself.
And you've been in the county road department how long?
Well, actually, it's over thirty, over thirty years.
Well, you say you worked, you worked twenty-seven years and now you've been back six, so thirty-three years.
Yeah, I've been, and honestly, it's been doing just this. I mean, I, I've been involved with these floods for, for that many years. But like I said, this is the most sites that I've seen as far as road damage. We've got more now than, than I have ever dealt with.
But, you know, you can't just throw a bridge together and, you know, if it was a, a, a road washed out and you could go in, we could, and we've, and we've done that. We've put, you know, roads, we've had slides, we've cleared the slides, we've had embankment failures, we fixed embankment failures.
See, there's the issues there that does hurt is because Knox Creek is not a creek. It's Knox Creek, but I'm promised, that's a river.
That's a river.
So the length of that and the length of those bridges hurts on us trying to put a bypass in. If, if we could put a good bypass in, I would feel a lot better about those, about those places.
But you can't bypass it.
But you can't, you can't, there, there's.
If it's on Long Fork Everge or if it's on Pond Creek, or if it's on Smith Fork Phelps, or if it's on Barnshee. You can go throw, you can go throw a bypass in, put some drains in. You can't do that over there.
No.
Couple of six-foot drains and you're rolling. But over there, I mean, it's a river.
It is.
How, how, how wide will that bridge, how long will that bridge be? How many feet?
Both of those are going to be over one-twenty, a hundred-and-twenty feet. So Woodman Summer is measured out at one-twenty-five. And then Middle Elk was, I think it was one-ten at Middle Elk, which we can, honestly, the bridge will be around one-twenty once we redesign and we submit that design. Because we, I'll tell you something good that did come with this on the Middle Elk was we found out we can raise those piers three feet. So that's going to give you more flow to prevent this from happening again. You know, by raising three feet, you're going to increase that water flow quite a bit. Yeah. So, I mean, if there's anything good at all that you could say about it is your next bridge that we build will be better than the one that was washed away.
That's all we can do?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Anybody else have anything for me?
I got one question on that James Sweeney Road there.
Yes, sir.
Above Rock House. There's a bunch of brush down against that little bridge where the whole bridge sit down the creek. Can we get that out?
We can.
Okay.
No, we can.
That guy, I talked to him today, he wasn't really complaining. He just said, another big water comes and, I mean, it's got the water about level with the yards.
And, you know, we're working our way around there, but, yeah, we will get it.
He, he just asked me if we could get out or if he had tried to harass somebody or something, and I said, well, I mean.
We'll, we'll grab it.
I, I, I do want to say something. I misspoke. There are over eighteen-hundred sites. Am I right, Tim and me? There's eighteen-hundred places on county roads and bridges. Uh, am I right, Tim and Nee? There's eighteen hundred places on county roads and bridges where we've got eight damaged, eighteen hundred.
Well, can I say something on that? Does, that will grow. That's not a hard number that you have there. Uh, that number will grow. It will, it will be more than that. Yeah. And that's why I said that this is the, the most damage that I've dealt with. I mean, and I'm, and I do include the thirty years that I've been here. Uh, it's more widespread and more damage, you know, uh, just everywhere. So it, it will take a while. I, I promise. It's going to take a while to get this back.
All right, let's move on. Um, Frankie, I want you to do us one motion.
Acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and Clerk's twenty-five fifty report for March twenty twenty-five. Authorization of a annual standing order for pre-approved certain recurring expenses for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, which will be part of the budget when we submit it. Authorized check for lodging registration expenses for any employee who needs to attend the KCJEA, KMCA Joint Summer Conference, June tenth through the twelfth at the Marriott Griffin Gate in Lexington. And authorized payment of the expenditure approval list dated April twenty-first, plus any other utility bills before we run checks, which will probably be tomorrow.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the treasures business list? We have motion by Commissioner Lewis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Um. All right. Bobby, any personnel business? All right. I don't have anything else. Uh, is there any other business coming before the court?
Uh, Judge, what we going to do about our employees trying to get to work the next couple of days? They is the courthouse. Everybody open. What they going to do?
We're going to keep it open. I mean, it's a pain, but you know, we've always kept it open and, uh, I mean.
That's why I was just wondering. I didn't know.
Yeah, I mean.
If they'd be here, what?
Uh, unfortunately, we'll, we'll be here. Yes.
I'll be in, I won't be here Friday. I've got to be in Huntington Friday. My daughter got picked for the best of the class. How WSAZ does it?
Congratulations.
She'll be representing East Ridge. So that's where I'll be all day Friday.
Well, congratulations. Well, um, is there any, uh, body, uh, with the county have anything come before the court? Roy, got anything? Frankie, anything else? Jimmy, you got something? Come on up.
Inspectors and contractors know that before they do any construction and stuff, they supposed to come through courthouse here, through my office to do it. And I've noticed some new construction out there that I wasn't aware of. And for them to do an electrical inspection in the county, they got to be approved by this court. And most of them are. And I just want to let them remind them that any construction, home, mobile home, building, and even temporary power. Because what happens is somebody goes out there and they get temporary power to build a home, they get it three quarters of the way built before we know it. And then there they are below the base flood elevation and they've got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house bill. So they need to, these electrical inspectors, before they have put that sticker in that box, they either need a permit or a, an exemption letter. So if you've seen them, let them, I just want to make them aware of that because I'm not, I'm not having much traffic through the office here in the last few months. So I just want to make them aware of that.
And we just also, uh, want to let people know the deadline for filing a claim with FEMA is May twenty-fifth. If you want to file a claim for the damage from the flood, the deadline is May twenty-fifth, either at the DRC at Belfry or the DRC at, uh, the library here in Pikeville. Um, the deadline for applying for the buyout program is April thirtieth. While there are different deadlines, I don't know. We've got a hundred sixty-eight Jimmy signed up so far?
So far, I, I don't feel like we will be more.
Okay. All right. So we've, we figure a hundred sixty-eight have signed up for interest to, to, to be considered for this buyout program. And, um, I think in, in NRCS, they don't have a deadline, but for the hazard mitigation side, there's going to be a separate pot of money. They did take some yesterday. Is that correct? So there's, there's going to be some buyouts. If you are in an area that has flooded or that you are concerned about flooding and you're wanting to be out of that danger, it is, in my opinion, the only way to save lives and to prevent this from happening to you. It's the only guaranteed way to not get flooded is to be away from these creeks, streams and rivers. And if you live in the flood plain and what we've seen, and I think Nee would back, would, would back this up, we've seen areas like over in Pond Creek that have never flooded in the last fifteen, twenty years have flooded. Homes that have been there for a hundred years, um, that flooded that had never flooded before. And, um, so if it's not mandatory, nobody's making you do it. If you, something you're interested in, you need to put on, get yourself on the list. It's, it's, you know, if they offer you something you can't live with or you think it's not fair, then nobody's going to make you sell it. Nobody's going to make you take it. There's no, you know, it's, see what they offer you. If they don't offer you enough money, then stay where you are. Um, but it's at least an option. It's something that the fiscal court doesn't have to do. But I made that decision that we were going to move forward with it. The courts backed me up on that. And we're going to, we're going to try to provide that, that resource uh, and that assistance to county residents that are interested in being protected from repetitive flood events. Um, so, um, so I just wanted to mention those deadlines. Anything else come before the court? Bobby, you got anything?
No, Judge, I'm, I'm good.
Freddie, anything?
No, I'm good, guys.
Ronald, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the workers for the county, uh, the road department. Everybody's, uh, they've worked really hard. They've been working overtime about every day, don't they? I think they're back down, what, six days a week most of the time now. They're getting things back.
So on that note, we'll try to let them have most Saturdays off now. Uh, there will be occasions that we would like to work Saturdays. I'm trying to move back where we just work the normal five, but we still be working ten hour days.
Yeah, that'd be great. I want everybody to have a good hillbilly day.
Yeah. You know, I, I would like to say this about hillbilly days. Um, I thought it really important, you know, I go to church with, uh, with jury, uh, Huffman and, and we was talking the other day. You don't realize how much money that the hillbilly days bring in for the Shriners. And you know, to me, I don't think that there's a better group in the world when you deal with Shriners and St. Jude's to give to because they do a, they're a godsend to children. And you know, in our area, he was telling me that just in our area, uh, in the eastern part of Pike County, Ford County, you know, we've got over four hundred children right in our area that goes to Shriners Hospital. That's a lot of children, uh, in our area, over four hundred. And this is probably their biggest fundraiser they are, uh, as far as hillbilly days. So I would, um, ask you, please come and support that and, uh, you know, because I promise you, every dime you spend, um, you know, is, is, is definitely a, a, a great help, you know, to this area and to our children in this area. And if you can't come, you'd like to make a donation to the Shriners, uh, pull it up on, you know, your phone or whatever. Um, because you just don't realize how much work these guys do. And I thank God for those guys, you know, like jury and, and all of them. I mean, you know, they spend their life out here every day, not just during hillbilly days, but all the time running back and forth, you know, to, to the hospitals, taking children, taking families. Um, what a wonderful program. I mean, you know, and, and that's, I just, I thank God for those kind of people. I really do. Because we would be in a mess if it wasn't for those type of people there, you know? They're in the, in the background. Nobody sees them. Nobody knows them, uh, you know? But, uh, man, they're making things happen for our kids and, uh, I thank God for them. I want to say that.
All right. Uh, anything else? Ronald, you got anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right. Uh, Nee, you want to come up here and close this out with a word of prayer and then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall we bow for prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, what we come to you now, Lord, just thanking you, Lord, for this day of life you've given us. Lord, we thank you so much for, uh, this court, dear Lord, and the representation of our county and our people, dear Lord. And Lord, I pray that you be with each and every household that's represented here, dear Lord. And Lord, that everything that's been said and done, dear Lord, be pleasing unto you. Lord, I pray that you continue to bless the people of Pike County, dear Lord. Lord, give everyone traveling mercies as they leave and watch over and protect each and every one of us. Lord, we just ask these things in your precious and holy of names. And amen.
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Lewis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes, we are adjourned.